Welcome to the February 25th, 2019, meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Twitty, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflambeau?
Here.
Mr. Scraby Tennis?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Ms. McPartland?
Here.
Mr. Diarpino?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here. Okay, we have the minutes that were included in our packet from the February 11th meeting. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scraby Tennis and seconded by Mr. McPartland. I have no comments. Anybody else have any comments or questions or changes to the minutes at all?
One really small one. When I spoke, I was speaking for students, not just students. To, uh...
It's at the end.
Towards the end.
Line 213.
Yes, thank you. So what's the change? You have a 213, just add an S to students.
Oh, students, okay.
Very small change.
Yeah, I think we can make that a friendly amendment. Anybody else have any changes at all to the minutes? No? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, we'll accept the minutes as slightly modified. And we'll move on in the agenda. Let's see, public hearings, no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town and Niskiuna, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we gladly listen to what you have to say. And thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight, by the way, including the board members in the town. Thank you.
A lot of sticks falling on the ground.
Yeah.
But Darrell Bray, 1420 Van Antwerp Road. Thank you, guys, for everything. I wanted to talk about 1380 Van Antwerp Road. It's one block up from me on Van Antwerp. There's already been three houses put in there on that corner. And the water is an issue. I mean, there's McGovern is between me and that corner, or that block, as it is, but all the drainage goes generally into, I think it's like an eight-inch pipe that runs under McGovern and into my backyard. It's run underground. But when it's heavy rain, like in that area, over the 20 years I've lived there, or 18 years I've lived there, it's progressively gotten wetter and wetter. And now it's, we're seeing where, like, in really heavy rains, like, the water will actually, like, pump out of the drains. That eight-inch drain is like, I'd say, three, four feet below the dirt, and in the backyard is sort of tiered. I don't know if you kind of know the area. But the water will, like, literally pump out of that drain, like, it'll fill that cavity and then start pumping out of the drain and running down. Traditionally, it would be always wet in the spring down there, but then even last year, it was like the middle of July, I got my riding lawnmower stuck down there, because it's just, and it just never dried out. Like, I could never, you know, you walk down there, it's just mud. It's, I guess, just going to this, I mean, just, that was five acres of pretty much trees, and now most of the trees are gone. And then, I guess, there would be, all the trees would be gone, and then all the runoff would go into that drain, I guess. That area is not, the storm drains are just inadequate. And I don't know whether it's an issue with people who are running stuff into the storm drains, or whether it's just the way the land is graded, but I just don't see that additional development without some sort of mitigating factor to take into account. And I don't know if there's been substantial environmental evaluation done as to what, where that water's going and how much water that is, but it's a lot. So I just, it makes me very nervous. I don't, I just don't think it's a great idea. I don't, I'm not for necessarily cutting down a lot of trees to begin with, but that is one of the things that can help with water issues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Privilege of the floor? No? Okay, seeing no further, oh, we got one, all right. Sorry about that.
Hello?
Hi.
Tom Hodgkins, at Leven Roseneil Road. I'd like to address the Yody Heck property. Considering over that. So I was, last time I was thinking about how much Niskiuna has changed since I was young. This time, I thought about this issue a bit more, and I've come to some little clear understanding of the issue for myself. But first, I'd like to start with a few selections from the comprehensive plan. This, on the first page, talks about livability factors in Niskiuna, mentions how there are, you know, only 34% of households in Niskiuna have children. And so there's a lot of other people that live here for other reasons. And on the first page, it mentions, one of the first, the first livability factors it mentions is towns, parks, open spaces, natural areas, walking paths. So this is, this is a key aspect that was in the comprehensive plan from 2003. So it's, it's on its way out, but it's still something that's still, should be considered. And it mentions, page five, "With this view in mind, the plan attempts to position Niskiuna to take full advantage of future opportunities as they arise." So this is, this is, this is an opportunity to arise, to address some of these goals that the plan lays out. So one of these goals is ensure adequate open space and recreation systems of publicly accessible, active and passive opportunities. Enable Niskiuna to build on its existing system by positioning the town to take advantage of open space opportunities as they arise, thereby enabling the town to realize the long-term goals and objectives of an open space and recreation plan. So this is, this is a key point where we have an opportunity, where assessing a significant portion of town land or state land. And we, I think we should evaluate how that will fit into this open space plan. And then there's a whole issue area on recreational facilities and open space reservation. And the first sentence of this special issue area is, "The importance of recreation facilities and open space on the livability of a community cannot be understated." So this is a very, I mean, that's, that's fairly strong statement. Fourth paragraph, "Additional actions are necessary to ensure that recreation, open space needs are identified, and appropriate actions are implemented to meet future town needs." There's a key. Open space is not a renewable resource. I'm sorry. Open space is a non-renewable resource, right? So once, once you transfer this land to developer and let them build mixed use, or whatever else is under consideration, you know, it's, that's not going to come back. It's just transferred to a private entity, it's not going to come back into the public domain. So this is, this is a key, key time to evaluate these things. Important and unprotected open space may disappear without upfront planning. So I think that all takes into consideration. I mean, there's, there are those questions of new houses as well. Here it says, "Position itself to take advantage of emerging opportunities, which could enhance the diversity of recreational experiences by residents." So this is, this is, this is an opportunity for us, we have to consider. Here it talks about the economic benefits of preserving open space. Preservation of open space generally has wide support from residents, and preservation makes economic sense. There's no study reference here, but communities that preserve their character in natural areas typically outperform economically those communities that do not. So, so there is, apparently, there's been a lot of research into this, and communities that preserve open space, protect wilderness, have those resources, add a lot of value to the properties there. So if you're looking at just maximizing taxes, well, maybe mixed use might be one way to do it, but you're also going to lose a lot of value by transferring that to a private entity.
And eliminating the open space, or reducing it to 20%, or whatever was considered earlier.
Goals. Continue enhancing the town's broad-based recreation and open space network that enables current town residents to enjoy diversity of recreation opportunity. Build on this network to ensure that future recreation and open space town needs will be met. So this is, so this is, this 2013 Comprehensive Development Plan for Town and Niskiuna encourages active preservation of open space as the opportunities arise, and this is one of those opportunities, it's under consideration. But that's one perspective, okay? But there's a lot of perspectives out here. We haven't had any developers come speak, and I'm sure they have a very persuasive argument about maximizing tax revenues and, and all sorts of other, other issues. We heard about need for another library and lawyers' offices last week. There's a lot of perspectives out here. And I don't think that, you know, we can figure it all out in a short period of time. So I think I'm proposing that there's a three-year freeze on all redevelopment at that, at that site. And in that time, you form a fully deliberative committee to evaluate all the opportunities, all the goals that the town might have for that site. Now, what is a deliberative community committee? It's, it's one that is completely nonpartisan, embraces people from all over Niskiuna, all perspectives, that would come together and really dig into the issue, look at schematics, look at plans, look at the underground tunnels, and evaluate all sorts of possibilities for the site. And it's not just maybe, you know, adults, but you can also include children in a, in a fully deliberative community committee. You include some students to come in and evaluate, look at this site, and, and really kind of examine what are, how does the redevelopment of this site match with the goals of the community? How does it fit in with the long-term development in the Town and Niskiuna? And what should it be in the future? So, you know, listen to the developers, listen to the students, listen to the forever wild contingent. And then, in three years, maybe you'll have a better understanding of what, what we should do. But for now, I think we don't need to do anything. Should freeze redevelopment at this point, and then put together a really deliberative community committee to examine this specifically, because it's, it's a large section of land, and it has a lot of opportunity that I think, I think we need to consider. In previous iteration, I had a petition for something else, some previous, I'll submit that tonight. This was, I had a petition before my kind of thinking kind of solidified on this. Well, I'll just submit it. It was just kind of a support community-centered rezoning, maintain significant public use, establish nature preserve, grow community with a community garden, create outdoor recreation area, and I got a ton of people to sign it, including my three kids, because they're citizens here, too. So I'll submit that for this, the record. But I have a better petition going, and I got my first victim over there, Darrell Bray. And that's, that's just, you know, simply the three-year freeze on, on the privatization and redevelopment, create a deliberative community committee to evaluate, to fully evaluate the long-term goals and opportunities for the town at the Yody Heck site, and then preserve nature, because it's, it's a nature preserve right now. Why change it? At least part of it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Privilege of the floor, anybody else? No? Okay, we'll close. Privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business and no new business tonight. So we'll move right into discussion items, first up being 1380 Van Antwerp Road, sketch plan application for a three-lot minor subdivision. And it looks like we have Mr. Plessy here representing the applicant, Lee Seaton, right? So I know that, kind of give us an overview of what's going on there, and then obviously we heard something from the public tonight. I don't know if you have any information that you can talk about that. It'll be nice.
Good evening, Luigi Plessy with ABD Engineers, here tonight on behalf of Mr. Lou Leese and his daughter Elena. The project that we're here for tonight is 1380 Van Antwerp Road. It's right on, it's actually got three sides to it. Van Antwerp on the north, Hilltop is on the south, bottom of the page, and McGovern. There's an existing home that sits there today with two driveway access points. One of the driveway access points is right off of Van Antwerp, and the other one is off of Hilltop. The current zone for this property is zoned R1, low density. The existing home does have access to public sewers and pub, public water. The size of the current lot is 1.6 acres. What we're proposing to do is a three-lot subdivision. The existing home, known as 1380 Van Antwerp Road, will remain as the, as an existing home. One of the driveways off of Hilltop will be removed, as well as a garage, to make way for lot number three. And then we're proposing another lot on the corner, known as Lot Two. All of the lots that are proposed are in conformance with the, the town zoning, the R1 residential zoning, where the minimum lot size is 18,000 square feet. And all of our lots are greater than 18,000 square feet. So the existing home, Lot One, will be 32,776 square feet. Lot Two is at 20,329 square feet, and Lot Three is 20,192 square feet. It's in character with, you know, obviously, the, the neighborhood. There are other lots that are on the, the street here on Hilltop. Those are actually a little, slightly less area. Some of those lots are 19,000 square feet, if not 18,000. So we're in conformance, we're not requesting any area variances for these three proposed lots. I mentioned the existing home, which is known as Lot Number One on this proposed subdivision, has existing sewer and water connections. Public water and sewer connections will also be available for the two lots, Lots Two and Three. The original plan that we had put together showed a easement for these utilities crossing some of the lots. And the reason for that initial thought was to avoid directional boring under Van Antwerp Road, because the water is on the north side of Van Antwerp Road, but as you get closer to McGovern, it crosses the road. So we were trying to get to, you know, to provide the, the water laterals to be on our side of the road, so we wouldn't have to cross the road. What we're aware of, the planning comments that came from Laura, there's, you know, a few items, four or five items, and one of the comments or concerns was regarding the, the way we were proposing the, the water laterals. So what we are proposing to do is revising the lateral connection. We're, we're really looking at Lot Two, which is the corner lot, and we're back to going across and directionally boring across Van Antwerp. So now, instead of having Lots Two and Three cross Lot One with an easement and two water laterals, Lot Two will only have an easement to allow the water connection for Lot Three. So if I show you, probably easier to visually show you. So originally, these two water laterals were coming in this direction, and I believe that's what you're looking at now. We're proposing, at this point, moving forward, to make the connection over here directionally bore across Van Antwerp. This one here wouldn't need an easement, because they would have direct access. And then Lot Number Three, we would have an easement along the rear here to get access to that water. So it cleans up the water lateral situation, as one of the comments here that Laura brought up. The sewer runs down Hilltop Road, and that'll be a simple sewer line, connect sewer lateral connection directly from the homes. Drainage isn't going to change. Right now, all the water does run in the northeasterly direction. There's actually a little pocket of wetlands down in here with a culvert at the low point of McGovern Drive. And, and the water, you know, does run in that same direction. That's the way it runs now, and that's the way we'll grade it to run in the, in the future here. I would like to note that, you know, if you look at the removal of this pavement and the garage, the amount of impervious surfaces that are there currently today would equal the proposed Lot Three home and driveway. Lot One, you know, of course, has the existing rooftop, which would remain, and a portion of their driveway would remain off of Van Antwerp. So Lot Two, again, you know, with the drainage flowing in the same nature as it does now, you're really not adding much impervious surfaces to this project. So water, sewer, stormwater, that's pretty much it. It's pretty straightforward. Let me just review some of the other comments that Laura made. I think I covered them. And then, as we, as we develop this, and the way we have the grading shown, and, you know, the revised water laterals, it's every intention to, to keep as many trees as possible. Mr. Leese is not looking to just come in and clear-cut, you know, this whole development. He is, he doesn't want to preserve some of the trees. And by, you know, moving some of those laterals from our original concept will, will definitely save some trees. So I guess at this point, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is the, the existing home, which the proposed future are Lot One. It's outside of the front setback line. I assume that house predates the zoning ordinance, so that's why it's, it's okay to be like that without having to come into compliance.
Right.
And is, where does that pick up sewer? Is that out on Van Antwerp or McGovern for?
It's out on Van Antwerp. Yeah, so right out of the corner, right where the P of porch is, the water comes out and connects to the water right there. And then the sewer comes out the north end of that house and, and tees right into the sewer main.
Is, who's in house, do you know who's in that lot now? Is that a family member or someone, you know, for Leese now, currently in there?
That I don't know.
But one of the things is, you know, losing the garage, so there may be, you know, if it was me, I'd want to have a detached garage, probably built someday on that property, right, which would, you know, kind of negate the equivalent impervious surface comment that you had. You know that losing the garage with that house, there's nothing, you know?
Right. Yeah, I mean, that, that's something that, you know, obviously, you need a building permit to build a garage, so we would look at it, or whoever would be in that house.
Yeah, but you're talking drainage, right? You know how that goes, right? Later on, coming in with, you know, 20 by, 24 by 24, you know, two cars detached, it won't trigger all those, probably all those reviews that we have the opportunity to perform now, right? There was a comment regarding storm sewer not being able to handle the load. Do you know what that location, anything you may be talking about, or?
Just from looking at the topography on the, on our site here, this is the low point in this area. I know, you know, this site does drain to this low point. There's a little bit of wetlands, culvert.
The other side of McGovern, I think, is the part that we were, the gentleman was speaking of.
I believe the gentleman lives on this corner lot, right? And he was talking about in his backyard, yeah. But everything drains here. There's a culvert pipe that goes under McGovern. There's a catch basin right here. And then, I'm assuming, it continues to drain in the northerly direction, and it's actually the same watershed as, like, this little creek there that runs behind Town Hall here and goes down. You know, so I don't know, a lot of times, you know, when things don't get maintained, yeah, water does back up over time. So maybe it's something the town can look into as well, see if there's any, you know, pipes that are clogged or dammed by beavers, or whatever the case may be. But maybe a little bit of maintenance would, would help the situation out. I'm not sure at this point, but.
Are you, are you going to perform any analysis, or you're just going to basically state that the pervious surface is equivalent, so you don't need to do the analysis?
Well, I know we're going to increase the pervious slightly, from, from what we're proposing. So, you know, like we've done on some of the other subdivisions, you know, we can certainly provide a little bit of a drainage summary analysis of some sort to, you know, reduce the amount of peak discharge rates that come off of this site. We could do a pre-to-post analysis, and, you know, we've done that before, and, you know, if it needs a little rain garden or something on the, on the site, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. You guys have consistently required those on two-lot subdivisions that had comments of concerns for drainage, so I think that's a normal thing for you to require.
Yeah, especially with the comments, if there's, you know, if it is a town maintenance, you know, problem, well, that's fine, too. We'll have to look into that. But you don't want to make a situation worse if it can't handle it, you know, and everything's functioning okay.
Right.
I know there's also, I think, you know, we get an agenda statement for the planning office. This is the first time that we've had an opportunity to discuss this and talk to you about this project. And obviously, you know, you know, just like the previous speaker about, you know, open space and everything, you know, this was a nice lot, tree lot. We went through a lot of work when it was subdivided for those other parcels in the back, I believe, was it two? It ended up with three, right? Three?
Yeah.
Three. And, and part of the, you know, discussions we had was, hey, that this Lot One, I guess we'd call it, or the existing parcel at 1380, would, would stay the way it is. Of course, we didn't have any provisions that would make that legally possible to keep it the way it is, but it would be nice. But, so it's your, you know, your right to come in here and to, you know, take the process and to, to look at doing a subdivision. But, you know, obviously, it's concerning to us. We hate, you know, nobody likes changing our neighborhood, including myself, right? How about marking trees? Is that something we could do? Maybe send the tree committee out to take a look and mark, and to see whether that's, you know, where your proposed sighting of the houses are right now, and what the impact is, and just see if there's any way we could mitigate that. I think that would be pretty important for the neighbors and, you know, for us also.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of hard at this point, because not knowing who the customer is, what layout of that exact foundation footprint might be. You know, I, I think we would certainly take that as a condition, you know, prior to building permit, you know? I think that's actually a requirement anyways, right, Laura? Prior to building permit, you know, the tree committee does go out and mark the trees, and we can add the notes to the plan, the subdivision plan, to ensure that that gets done.
Yeah.
As well.
And I don't think, once somebody owns a house, they can cut down whatever they want, pretty much, right?
After the fact, probably, yeah.
Depends. Yeah. I mean, but a way that you can mitigate that is the consideration of one lot instead of two, because then you're not going to need to cut down as many trees, and maybe you could save the carriage house. And I'm just speaking to that, because when the other subdivision came through, there was a representation that that was going to stay as a single parcel, and that one of the reasons for that is the carriage house was historic, and there was these really large old trees on that property. And when you squeeze in the two houses, there's just no way to keep the trees and, you know, and the carriage house, whereas if you made it into a single lot, then it's more in keeping with the character, and you can keep some of those things that we discussed at the other subdivision. I don't know if you guys have looked into two lots instead of three?
I mean, I wasn't part of the original subdivision. So, you know, and it, and it was a, I believe it was a different applicant as well. Looking back at the records, it was a different applicant.
Yeah, homes, right?
We, we actually did some work for homes across the street there, her, where she lives now. So, you know, we are familiar with the Um, so, you know, we are familiar with the area, but, you know, unfortunately with that previous subdivision, you know, we had nothing to do with that. Um, there's no, nothing set in stone, I guess, as far as any conditions on that subdivision. And, uh, you know.
So I guess I'll.
But it's the planning boards, I mean, it's in the planning board's power and purview to make sure that subdivisions are in keeping with the neighborhood and keeping with prior approvals and that we're looking at everything that's happening all around, so.
And I'll just, I'll add my one, one observation I have about the virtue of potentially making this a two lot subdivision as opposed to a three is, um, being that, uh, lot two would be a corner lot, I, I think, um, it, it, being under a half acre or around a half acre, it, it significantly hampers the ability to have any minor accessory structures on that property, um, being that you've got two front yards, um, as a, as a corner lot. And so, you know, to that end, um, having, having, if you were able to combine those or take this entire parcel and make two, uh, equally sized lots that are closer to an acre each, you, you have a lot more room, um, in which is not uncommon to see in a, in a planned, a large planned development, um, larger lots on corners for that, for that reason.
Yeah, I mean.
And if you were to keep lot two and lot three together, I could see how potentially that existing garage carriage house might be able to be preserved, which I'm not sure what the value of that is, uh, or.
Yeah, I, I, I do have numbers on that when talking to Lou today, you know, and, and it was over a hundred and fifty thousand to, uh, to renovate that. And it's not worth keeping, so it needs a lot of work.
You mean renovate it to be something?
To make it a, a sing, a residence.
Right.
Make it a, yeah, residence, okay.
Well, you were referring to the value that it is as it is.
Well, it sounds as though it's historic to some degree. I'm not sure how long that's been there and what purpose it could serve if that were still a garage or,
Right.
Whatever its current state is.
If, if I had a few cars and, and I was the applicant and needing, needing, you know, a three car garage or something to park my vehicles, then yes, it would have, uh, uh, it would have some value to me. Um, I don't know if Lou has that value or not. He looked at, you know, whether it would have value to him or not, and it, and it doesn't. He told me that. And, uh, you know, the, the garage is going to be removed is what he's telling me. Um, as far as combining, you know, lots two and three, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't think he would be willing to do that. Um, you know, I, I do respect a corner lot, you know, wanting to be a bigger lot size. But, you know, the way we look at it, you know, we're, we're in conformance with the zoning, right? Lou has the right to develop these lots to conform to the town, uh, regulations, so I don't, I don't see.
Planning board has discretion on character of the neighborhood and making sure that there's no.
But we are, we're, we're in character because we're meeting the size of the lot. Like this, it's the same.
It goes farther than that. The planning board has more power than just rubber stamping lots that meet the size.
Will there be garages on the other two, uh, parcels?
Yes.
Why?
Other gar, well, because of the houses.
Why?
The houses will have garages.
But why, why will they have garages?
What do you mean?
I'm just sure, I'm just curious what the justification is for garages for the two new houses.
You build a house today with a garage.
So will it be a garage on the old existing lot?
That I don't know. I mean, it, they could, he could add.
Yeah, that's what I was saying earlier.
How do you not, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if there's a, if, if it's obvious there's going to be a garage in the two new proposal.
Right.
Why is the answer, I don't know, now, the old lot?
I mean, you know, Lou didn't tell me to add a garage to the existing lot. But it can certainly be added.
Sounds like it would be added.
But again, it's up to, it's up to the, you know, who's willing to, to purchase or live in that home.
Could, can you, Luigi, give us any idea of what the intentions are with the existing home? Is that, is that acceptable as is? Is there, are there planned changes or developments?
Internal renovations to, you know, to bring it up to, to today's standard, I guess. But I don't know the exact, you know, I guess that's something I can find out for you guys. You know, whether it's for his daughter to live there or, you know, to be put on the market to sell, you know, but some work will be done to bring it up to, you know, to a better standard, I guess, than it is now.
Do you have a sense, order of magnitude of the size of lot, of a, of a square footage of, uh, houses on two and three?
So I know the, the three lot subdivision that was previously approved, there's three new homes there now. So they would be comparable to those. I'm not sure exactly how much those will go for, but I would think high twos, threes, you know?
Square footages?
Square footages, maybe two thousand square feet or so. And, and again, I'm just, I'm just ballparking these numbers.
The other ones are a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, so, so whatever those are, these would be comparable because, you know, again, the lot sizes are actually bigger than what was previously approved, so, you know, you can fit those, that same size house on these lots.
With an integrated garage?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions for you?
Um, I did have a chance to run the revised water line past the engineering department, and I still think it needs work. Luigi, it's probably worth a call to them because there's a high pressure zone that you're connecting into, and they don't feel that this solution's necessarily going to work either. So I'd say just call them and work directly with them, yeah.
That would be, uh.
Matt.
Matt Yedder.
Yeah.
You also need to update the drawing to remove Rich Palick's name, too, for the signature.
Oh, that's right, yes.
To Matt Yedder.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're hearing is, uh, we know it conforms, you know, we don't like change. You know, we had lots of discussion about trying to preserve this parcel when we did the last subdivision. Um, so, you know, we'd like you at least to take it back to Mr. Leese to see if he's willing to, um, consider, uh, you know, a two lot subdivision versus a three. Uh, we want to preserve as many trees as possible. Um, still understand the potential there to lose the, uh, the garage, even if it's only a two lot subdivision. Uh, and, you know, we would expect high probability that the remaining house would probably have a detached garage at it someday. So if that's the case, you know, why not, you know, show it now so we know? But, uh, we can count that impervious surface into any calculations, including whether it's a two or three lot subdivision. I think those, I think we need to at least continue the discussion on that, um, because that would, uh, change things slightly. Um, as far as flows, you know, as you, as you stated, you know, you would take a look at pre and post analysis, um, just because of the, the public comment, make sure everything's okay, at least as far as coming off of this, uh, uh, proposed subdivision. Uh, it, it's a tough one, you know, I'd like to, you know, see as many trees preserved there also. Um, so, you know, if we could somehow take a look at that and not wait, I think it would, it would help out. Uh, but I'm, you know, just speaking for myself, are any, any other thoughts or comments, concerns? I mean, uh, you know, I think those, I have, I have to take a ride over, take a look. I think the three new homes are all like, uh, two story type homes and not ranches, right?
I believe so.
So, I mean, if you get twenty-two hundred square, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred square feet in a two story, you know, you're, you're decreasing the impervious surface versus, you know, a
Right.
two, twenty-four hundred square foot ranch, you know, on the corner there too, you know? So if, if the homes are in keeping with, uh, what's, uh, been built there, you're right. You know, it doesn't change the character of the new neighborhood, but it still changes the character of what was there because, you know, the, you know, the old mature growth. Uh, and the, uh, even though it may not be a historically registered property, it's just, it's been around a while and it's, you know, you know, it looks nice over there, of course, so. So we have some concerns, so we're not ready for like sketch plan approval tonight. So I think we need at least, uh, another round with engineering, talk to the applicant, you know, on what we heard tonight.
Yep.
If he's not already watching on, on TV live, uh, uh, and, and we'll, uh, you know, we'll see what, you know, we'll work with you. But, uh, I guess take a little bit of pushback is what you're hearing tonight to get started. How's that, right?
Right.
And anybody else, any thoughts on that or comments?
No, I, I mean, the feedback from the, the neighborhood is that it did have a, a negative impact with prior development that, that, that this applicant had nothing to do with. May have had, may have had a negative impact on the water flow. So to add a lot more impervious surface, the expectation is a net neutral impact on watershed, right? So I think, I like your idea of, of designing it with the, uh, with the likelihood of a, a garage within the original parcel and what impact that would have on the runoff upfront, because I think that eventually that would become a discussion.
Yeah, and it may not be that great, as you know, it's only another, whatever, you know, twenty by twenty garage, whatever.
Yeah, no, that's, that's certainly something that we can add to the drainage, drainage analysis. We, we do it all the time, you know, for, you know, bank parking, you gotta do it, but, you know, things like that, so it would be the same thing.
All right, so let's just take it, uh, and get, get together and we'll keep it on the agenda. We'll talk about it, uh, next time. And everything we'll need, obviously, is a project lead, somebody, you know, would like to volunteer. If not tonight, you can always contact Laura, somebody to work with, uh, the applicant, uh, at least to try to drive this home, right?
Just as feedback, this is personal. Um, it's an idea that may be representative of what a board might ask, but is there any possibility the applicant would relocate the garage to the original property? Just consideration, based on some of the things we heard. Prior applicants' development had a lot to do with retaining those structures, you know, keeping them in the community and the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So just a, just something to put out there now.
Okay.
Do we know if it's in any condition, should be moved?
That I don't know, yeah. That's something, you know, Lou might have to get a proposal from a moving company to see if it can even be moved. But, yeah, no, you know.
Now's the time to check.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know, I asked, so is the current house occupied? Is there somebody renting it or living in there at all?
I can't answer.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, you know.
Yeah.
If, it's because we could also only do a site visit and take a look over there, you know? Okay, any other questions right now from the board or from the applicant? No? Great, okay, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have, uh, three ninety-eight Anthony Street, a tenant change and a site plan re, uh, approval based on that tenant change. And then we have the applicant here, thank you. And, um, we have an agenda statement. And J-Dog Junk Removal, three ninety-eight. And so I, I talked to the applicant just briefly before the meeting. What I, what I was asking is that maybe state your name and address for the record, and if you could just kind of give us an overview of, you know, what's going on there now and what this proposal is. So just so we understand what's, what we're talking about, okay?
Sure, my name's Ray Gaglin. I'm the president and CEO of J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling. Um, my address, my home address, I live in Charlton, but the, the address of the business is three ninety-eight Anthony Street, uh, Niskuna. Um, J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling is a, um, national franchise. It's a franchise for veterans by veterans. You have to be a, uh, a veteran in order to own a J-Dog, uh, and/or an immediate family member of a veteran. Um, we start our, our J-Dog business out of our home. Uh, we live in Glenville, uh, and, um, we started our business in two thousand sixteen. Uh, we, we've done, my wife and my son ran the business for, uh, a couple of years. They did a great job. We needed to expand the business and we needed a bigger space, uh, so we found three ninety-eight Anthony Street. Um, we've been, it's a junk removal, uh, and hauling business, so it's a lot like one eight hundred Got Junk, uh, or a Junk King type of a business, um, but it's done a little differently. Um, you've probably seen the camouflage trucks around, you've probably seen my guys in uniform. Uh, we do it the military way, which means we show up on time, we're in uniform, we're respectful of our clients and customers' property, and, um, we do our business with, with military precision. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I spent twenty-five years in the United States Marine Corps, retired master gunny. And we're here because we, we, we bought the property and, uh, the business that's running out of there now is J-Dog Junk Removal and Hauling.
How, how long have you been at the, the location, the current location, uh, three, was it three ninety-eight?
Yes, we moved in there in June.
Right, big June?
June.
Okay, June of eighteen, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And, um, you said that, are you also running, uh, out of Charlton or somewhere, a, a business also or out of your home?
Charlton is our home.
Okay, out of your home.
Right, the business that owns the property, the business that bought the property is my other business.
Okay.
And that's a training and consulting business, it's called BOSS.
Right, and that's, you'll have, uh, an office for that portion in this three ninety-eight and the, uh, J-Dog business out of three ninety-eight?
Yes.
And that's currently operating there now, the J-Dog?
Yes.
And just that we didn't have the formality to have that change of tenant when that assault occurred before, it sounds like?
Right, and what, and I'll be honest with you, what happened was we, uh, we assumed that our lawyer took care of that and we had no idea that we needed to, uh, to, to post a site review or anything like that, so.
Okay. Yeah, we always look at tenant changes and, you know, and, you know, ask the questions about what's different and whether there's, it has to be anything that's mitigated in order to allow the tenant change to occur without impacting, you know, the neighbors and, you know, the environment and, and those things. So that's why, that's why you're here, so.
True.
Um, what, when you operated the, uh, other business, uh, from your home, did you also have to store materials that you collected? Did, did you have a place to store there also, uh, to, to do recycling or reuse or?
No, we just, basically, we just, we took the stuff right to the dump.
You did it right away?
Right, the only thing that we do is we took a few tires off that would sit in my son's garage until we had enough to where it made it cost, uh, cost effective.
Okay, and just so you know, tonight, what we've got is basically an application and, uh, some questions. That looks like they were answered, okay, about the number of employees and, uh, about how, um, like I believe you was, uh, you were talking to Mr. Twitty over in the planning department about, uh, how you may have to store some things to go through it, neither, like I said, uh, dispose of it, recycle it, uh, or donate it. Uh, um, are you expecting a, a large, um, um, volume of material to be stored? You know, one of the things is we recently worked with the applicant across the street, J-Rock, right, J-Rock?
Well, Jackson Demolition.
Jackson Demolition, uh, you know, to, for that site. And so we had lots of questions for them about, you know, storing materials, the height of the piles, uh, uh, whether there's going to be any hazardous materials or liquids, so that the stuff that's stored, we have to worry about, you know, leaching into the soil and the environment, those kinds of things.
Right, so we don't handle, uh, hazardous material at all. So we don't collect any of that, none of that reaches the site. What we do do is all of our stuff will be cycled through. Uh, and when I say all of our stuff, not all of our junk comes there, obviously, but anything that's recyclable or donatable. One of the things that we do is we donate, seventy percent of what we collect, uh, will, won't, won't see the landfill. Um, we'll bring it back. We have a metal processing, you know, uh, recycling process where we actually, uh, we actually have a, a, a bin where we, we throw all of our pig metal, it'll be processed out, uh, every, every couple of times a week, they, they come and empty that. Um, everything else that we collect there, we move very, very quickly. Uh, what do I mean by that? Well, we, we will collect tires. Why? Because they're recyclable. And we have a vendor that'll come and get them and take them, and take them away. Um, but we only, we'll only have like a hundred tires on, onsite at any given time. Um, what else do we collect? All, all of our donatables, uh, we, we bring them in, we sort them, we have bins, uh, uh, where we, we'll, we'll stage them. And then we'll run them out to, once a week or twice, uh, twice a month, we'll run them out to Veterans Miracle Center, Habitat for Humanity, um, we, we do business with the Veterans Housing Coalition up in Saratoga. Uh, so, and we move all that stuff through, if that, if that makes sense. Nothing actually sits there.
Just to clarify, that is, when you say sit there, is it internal or is it outside storage?
The tires are on a rack that sit outside. Everything else is inside, except for the metal, the metal bin. We get that from Pretzels, citizen?
Yeah, if you're going to speak, you're going to need to come out up, just so he makes sure.
My wife.
Yep, he's going to make sure we get you on the.
I just heard you mention like, we take no liquids, no paints, no pesticides, no liquids. We don't, we won't even pick them up. We don't take propane tanks, we don't take asbestos, we don't take anything that's hazardous. We don't do any mold work, we don't do any of that.
For all the good stuff, right?
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough.
There's no way to get rid of it, we, we don't even take that.
Right.
You know, we used to, in the very beginning, say we'll take it, and then we were trying to dry out the paint cans and we're sitting them out in the sun so they dry out, it's just too much. So we just.
I agree, yeah.
And our metal guy's Pretzel, right?
Pretzels, yeah. TVs are recycled, tires are recycled, uh, mattresses, you have to, we have to pay extra and bring them to a special facility, and then they're recycled. We just, we just can't dump any of that stuff.
How about, do you have any, uh, uh, processing equipment onsite, like compacters or shredders or anything like that?
No, we have a forklift.
You don't size reduce, I mean, just maybe push it down in the, in the dumpster, that's about it, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's about it. And we, and we have a Pretzels can outside, uh, we have a waste management.
Waste management for cardboard, all of cardboard.
Cardboard glass.
Gets recycled.
And then, and then the rest of our building, we have bays where we'll store, um, medical devices. Why? Because the VMC takes all the medical devices that we can, that we can get. Yeah, the VMC, Veterans Miracle Center. Um, we'll have another bay for Habitat for Humanity. Anything that they've told us is on their list, we save it, and they'll either come and get it or, or we'll deliver it. So each one of our outbound bays, we have a vendor and we have a place where it's going. Um, it doesn't sit on, like, like I said, I, I think I said in my answer, no less than forty, forty-eight, seventy-two hours max.
Okay, are you, since you've been there since June, are you up to full, like, capacity and are you up and running right now? Or the, like you said, total fifteen employees, uh, total of five trucks, you know, are you?
I'd like to see it get bigger, but we're, I think we're pretty much at capacity now for a few years. And I say like to see it get bigger because we, we service the whole cap of region, so.
So I feel like it would be helpful if we could have a site plan that showed where the bin was for the metal and where the tires are being recycled and how the inside of the building is broken up with the bays. I feel like that would be very helpful for.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we usually, we usually get something that, you know, if we, you know, some mittles that show what you got, you know, where things are expected to be.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's just how we.
What's a drawing, you mean?
Yeah, the drawing.
Right outside of the building.
Yeah.
We can definitely, not like feet away or anything.
Right. And it's something we can always come down and take a look to, right? It's a sense it's functioning. I mean, I went down there to look across the street and I, you know, it was pretty quiet down there that day. So. Yeah. You know, one of the things like when we had in the site plan approval for the Jackson demolition, which is coming was like, you know, we had the preference that utilize a technology drive. You know, again, because of, you know, local traffic, you know, the neighborhood there. You know, can't force you to use technology drive, but you know, that takes you right out to Maxon Road there. Like, you know, obviously it's the trucks, it's always preferred instead of going through that, the other street, Anthony Street, right, where they're, you know, they're residential.
Yeah, we told our drivers that we want them going out to the end because Anthony's, there's always, there's always cars parked all over the place and I don't want them zigzagging around. Plus it's harder for them to pull out right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's for sure.
I have a quick question if I can ask though, or can I? I'm just curious about the road.
So the other thing was that it sounds like there was a conveyance of property, but the deed wasn't filed or wasn't updated to reflect those conditions, right?
The. Lot line adjustment.
The lot line adjustment, yeah.
That's something that, that's something that during the sell, sale, we were told was done. But I did see, not Jeff, the other guy in the office, the building. I filed for a permit to actually, to actually file the paperwork to have it done. He said to do this first.
All right, really?
Who's the other guy in the office?
Tom?
Is it Tom?
Canizzo or Ken, maybe?
Well, the guy that signed the.
Is that how, is that how we would do things, Laura?
Yeah.
Well, no, I think you can, that lot line adjustment is approved. You may have to go back to the surveyor and update some of the owner information on that plat and then bring it back to us, but you would definitely want to take care of that.
Yeah, so it was Tom. And I filed, he said I would need a permit to do that. And he said, do this first and then, and then, and then we'll worry about the site, the line, I guess.
The lot line adjustment.
Right.
So.
So you need a building permit if you're changing the inside of your building. He might have said that to you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, well, I know that.
But you don't actually need a building permit to do a lot line adjustment.
Or you don't?
No.
Okay.
He was probably just, sometimes he is a little hard to understand. He was probably telling you that you need a building permit to do the interior renovations of your building and they need to go in there and inspect, make sure that all of your emergency accidents are clear and those kind of things. Like you haven't put a wall in front of a exit door, like those kinds of things. But we can chat more. I mean, you definitely want to make sure that that lot line adjustment gets taken care of.
Yep. So the issue there is that we want to make sure that the deed is recorded, the county clerk with the new lot line. Ultimately, it'll be corrected on our tax roll also. But Laura, this was the one where we liked the lot line adjustment correct because it actually made the lot.
Because the building corner is like over the lot, yeah.
Right. The previous tenants, I don't know if it was the immediate ones or the ones before that. The way it was explained to me was they actually built out the building.
Yeah.
And they added to it. When they added to it, they added over the line. And that came up during the sale. But our attorneys made sure that we got a notice saying it was, that it was done. What we didn't get was anything from all of you. Apparently it wasn't done as far as the town goes.
Well, and you know what? There may be something filed that we haven't seen. So if your attorney has a copy of the deed that was submitted for filing, great. It'll be marked with a book and page number from the county clerk.
Super.
That would be the best case scenario. But if not, it hasn't been that long, so let's just take care of it now while we can. So at some point in the future, I mean, we're not messing around with it. Like, the good news is it's approved. Let's just get.
So who do I see for that?
Yeah, because I think he even got a variance. I think he even had to get a variance.
He had to get a variance even though it was more, he was making it more conforming than it was.
Right. Who do, so who, when you say take care of it, who do I take care of it with?
So when.
So the surveyor's name was.
It may be part of your closing file. So for instance, there, the surveying work's been done already, I believe.
CT Mail. So you probably need to reach out to CT Mail or maybe the older owner, get this plat.
I would call your attorney first.
Yeah.
Because if it came up at the closing, then it may be something where the description's ready to go. There'll be a meets and bounds description of that lot that the other owner is conveying to you. Ultimately, you can join those two on a deed so that you're just getting one tax bill from us.
Okay. And so when that's all done, do I file it with the town?
You file it with the county.
At the county clerk.
Right.
And then you bring copies back to the town.
Got you.
But you should get started on that right away, right away. We can't issue a building permit for the interior renovations, even if they're done already, because the billing inspector can't issue a building permit on a site plan that hasn't been approved.
Well, I wasn't applying for a building permit for any renovations.
Okay.
He told me I need to apply, he said it wouldn't be a bad idea for me to apply for the, he was talking about the boundary line, so I must have misunderstood. The day that I came in and gave the package, right? So.
So that's something that we'll want to have closure on. And if we don't get correct closure, it's something that we would have in a resolution if we were to go forward to make sure that it does happen, you know, have it taken care of. So anything you can do to just take care of it ahead of time, something for your own benefit, so.
Absolutely.
You know? The other thing is, is, so I think we need, you know, some kind of a sketch that just shows what you got down there. You know, get the deed situation straightened out. And then, what else? Laura, I guess.
The question is to call for a public hearing?
Yeah, we talked to Laura, you know, we thought it'd be wise to have a public hearing because, you know, we, you know, just to be, you know, be consistent, which is important, you know. Across the street, we had a lengthy process there. All it would mean is that we would call for a public hearing. We'd have you come on up and just talk about the business of what you're doing there. And we'd open it, the floor to the public and see if anybody had any concerns or something that we might not have thought of. Or maybe some residents down there had some issues that they needed to have mitigated or something along those lines. So it's always beneficial. And maybe nobody will have any concerns or anybody will show up either. So I think it's important that we do that. So I think we could do that relatively quickly, right?
We can have it at the next meeting.
Have it at the next meeting if that's okay with the board. Is there any concern with that at all? So let's call for a public hearing for the next meeting. So if you could make it also and just give us like the overview you did tonight about the business would.
And that's March eleventh?
Yeah, as long as Laura in the planning office can get the legal notice out and get that scheduled. Yep, the eleventh, you can do that. All right. And in the meantime, you work on your deed situation and it is a sketch, what you got down there and then we'll, we'll keep this moving forward. I, overall, personally, I don't see a problem. You know, and you're already there, you're already working. You just want to make sure that it's done appropriately and it's recorded properly in the planning office, you know, the business and what you're doing down there. And I think we'll be pretty good.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is the way things are laid out now, will it remain that way? Or is the sketch plan going to be a little different than where things are?
No, no, it's the way it is now is the way it is.
When I drove down there today, I know that there is no curb, right? You mentioned something about some, about, you know, just the road and the delineation points. But how do you get access? There's no curb at all, right? It's just completely flat road into the area where you park your vehicles, correct?
Right.
And then you just park them next to each other?
They're in the center and we have.
There's no lines or anything like that?
No.
Is it paved?
Part of it's paved, part of it's a cement slab.
Okay.
And then the rest of that is gravel.
Got it.
So the rest of that yard is gravel. And what we do is the guys will come in, we have a workflow. And we've talked about in the spring, if we ever, if we ever paved the rest of it, we'd actually put the lane up, right? So there's a lane. The trucks come in, they take a right right in front of the building. They unload all their stuff and then they swing back around, they park straight in. So everyone's always entering and egress, entering and egressing the same, from the same lane.
Right. It looks like there was order to it, for sure.
Yeah. The, yeah, and we, like I said, we've talked, if we can afford it, we'd like to pave the whole thing so that we can get lines down and things like that. Right now it's gravel. The half of it's cement from where it was, from, and then it ended and then the rest of it was gravel. The question we had though, what's that?
Would we need a permit for, if we do want to pave? Do you need permits for that?
I, I would say yes, because you're adding some impervious. And so the engineering department might want to take a look at it.
Good.
Yeah.
So, so one of the questions that we had was the road. With three, three ninety-eight Anthony. From, from the waste treatment center, from technology down to us. We've been told that that's not a town road and that's not maintained by the town. Because it's horrible.
And if you went down there today, you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
You can't even drive a car down there, we're destroying.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't accepted by the town and it has traditionally been maintained by the, when the Cardona and Sons, what they make, traffic, those little metal things that keep the cars from going off the road? I can't remember what they're called. They maintain that part of the road. Guardrails, yeah. They, the road, when they were building guardrails there, they kept the road pretty nice because you had so many trucks coming and going. But those buildings have been very vacant. So essentially it's privately maintained by the person who was at the end of the road. They haven't been privately maintaining it in a long time. That's why it looks like that.
So who's?
Is there, I mean, we, I mean, anything we can do about it? It's destroying.
So do I own, so, because my deed doesn't show me owning the road.
It, it just seems to be a natural extension that's occurred over time. I mean, you might be able to get with your neighbors and come to some kind of agreement or come to the town board and ask for something, but yeah, the town does not maintain that road.
So the garden, what's the name, the place right across the street?
It was a guardrail place.
Brightview, Brightview. The guy, manager of it, Brightview seems to think that the bur master's on the road.
They have a part of it, but there's an easement for the people who are on there to maintain that, to be allowed to use that area. I think that's actually on your survey. If you look at your survey, it shows where the bur master property comes to. It's on here.
But the bottom line from that intersection to the end, it's not a town road, Laura, right?
It was never accepted by the town. We've researched it a lot.
And that's, but that is the entry, the entry point for the Niskiuna Police Department to go into the range, right?
Yeah, because they have an easement there.
Okay. I just want to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's almost impossible to drive on that road.
Sounds like you may need to all get together and, you know, like you said, you propose something to the town or have some kind of a joint venture where you all contribute to maintenance of the road or something.
Yeah, because I know we pay taxes for the town.
Yeah.
But if it's not, you know, if it's not a town, if they never accepted the road, it never met the standards and so on and so forth, you know?
I agree. It's just hard because we have.
We do have those, you know, about where there's developments that don't turn the roads over to the town. They, usually they take care of them.
The other end of that is Schenectady though, right?
I think that's the part of it.
That's a Schenectady sewer plant is right there and they.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the line is, whether it's in the road or whether it's, you know.
We haven't been sure exactly where the line is. I feel like it's around where Anthony Street turns.
But that should all be available. We can look that all up, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, yeah.
So my last question would be from a timeline perspective. I know we have the meeting on the eleventh, the deed and everything, because we're actually leaving to go out of town next week, or tomorrow. We'll be down in Philadelphia all week. But is there a timeline that you, that we need to?
Well, if we, see, if we have the public hearing and we don't have any significant comments, we can call for a resolution, assuming that you get your paperwork in and it's been reviewed by the planning department. So that would put us in early.
Last meeting in March.
Last meeting in March, yeah. And if you're away, I mean, we could always, you know, we could always wait.
We'll only wait next week. Yeah, I just didn't need anything from us from.
No, just get the sketch in and, you know, and start, you know, working on clarifying the deed or make sure that's filed appropriately.
So from the survey, I'll take the survey because it shows where the building is at the end.
Yeah, you could use that and then mark it up. And if we have any questions when it's, you know, we look it over, we'll ask for some additional information. But between that and the, you know, your summary you had tonight for the public hearing, that's enough to get it, keep it going.
Okay.
All right. Unless anybody else has any other questions or comments or concerns? We'll also obviously like to have somebody as a project lead on this one to be the point person. All right?
Okay.
We'll, we'll get there.
Super. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in. All right. Next we have a discussion on five hundred Balltown Road, the rezone application for the R2 medium density. Included in, again, our packet. I believe Mr. Twitty did some research. There was a couple of ordinances from a couple of different towns. I think one of them is out near Rochester somewhere, right?
Yep.
Penfield. And then the other one, I wasn't sure, I never heard of that town before.
It's a suburb of Seattle.
Seattle. That was pretty extensive. And that one, the, you know, with the, the images or pictures or that they had enclosed in there, I think that's something that we looked at a long time ago when Kathy Matern was working on it, something similar to that. So I guess, you know, a good vision of what the mixed use neighborhood could, could look like based on their ordinances that they had. One of the things is, I know, Laurie, tomorrow night, you're on the agenda for the town board meeting to give a presentation. Is that similar to the presentation?
Yeah, I'm using his, I think we added a little bit more on like the, on like the division of, you know, different housing types and open space requirements and stuff like that, but it's generally the same presentation that we did here.
Okay. You know, the, I think what I'm hearing, at least what I see, tell me if I'm wrong, is that we're not really excited, we're not happy about the R2. I mean, it seems like that's firm, you know. Personally, you know, the R2 I think is going to, you know, be too intense. And I think the mixed use versus the R2 is a, is a better way to go because of the, the availability of the walkable community and the things that the neighborhood mixed use is supposed to put forward. You know, one of the things we've heard from the public and we talked about last meeting, including Mr. Oster, and especially Mr. Oster was mentioned, you know, it was in the minutes, you know, brainstorming. There's nothing ever wrong with, you know, having discussions and brainstorming. And one of the concerns was is that if, if that's, I think it was twenty percent in our proposed, right, in our ordinance, twenty percent for open space, if the area where the, I guess you call it the pond or the wetlands or whatever were to be used as twenty percent, you know, that wouldn't, you know, that would be, would meet the ordinance. But, you know, it'd be nice to have it not included if that area were to be able to stay the way it was. And then based on the forty acres, if they still had to come up with twenty percent, you know, they took it out of the other property that was available. So one of the things, again, in the spirit of brainstorming, would there be a way to like, maybe make land conservation along Balltown Road and around that corner to preserve that, the pond? We heard that people walk all that. And so therefore minimize the part that, you know, reduce the size of the parcel that would be for neighborhood mixed use?
Yeah, I mean, we heard that before. I'm certainly open to it. There's kind of a, I don't know if we can do sort of a strip of LC or not. I mean, maybe Rob and I could research that a little more.
Who would, who would accept it? I mean, we'd have to have someone own it and maintain it and provide public access.
No, LC would just be the underlying zoning. But general planning board practice says, you know, don't split zone parcels and things like that.
But the LC portion, if the desire to have public access, is it presumed that the town's going to title it?
Well, you could. So one of the things, I think, you know, Jengas and Mo were both the ones that asked for these, but like a little more clarification on the code, a little more clarification of open space and parkland. But, I mean, theoretically, the way that things normally happen when we develop is that the open spaces, well, actually, I'd say it's almost fifty fifty, but can be turned over to the town. It can also be maintained, but if it has to be public, then we're generally going to ask for it to be turned over to the town. So the question would be, if they couldn't, if you zoned LC on the pond and the existing forest, I mean, they could certainly be the underlying landowners and there could, and it would be much more difficult for that to be developed. Or during site plan review, you could say, yeah, the town will take this over. If you, if you, if you clarified the code more, because I think they're a little right. Like our code isn't very strong on what the definition of, of the park, of the open space is. And the Penn, the, the Western New York one has a much stronger definition of how the park open space works. They have this whole section called, on K, on the second to last page, is public open space. And it is very clear about what the open space needs to be. They have this whole section called, um, K on the second to last page is public open space and it is very clear about what the open space needs to be. So if we clarified our open space to something more similar where it has to be, you know, it has to meet these requirements, um, then the wetland would be excluded. The only risk to that, it would be that someone, and you guys already know this from River's ledge. I mean, you can't disturb that wetland without an Army Corps of Engineers wetland permit. But I mean, I guess it's theoretically possible that you could go to Army Corps of Engineers and get a permit to disturb that wetlands. It's hard. We know it's expensive. We know it takes a lot of years. Um, and it's something that the planning board could certainly like discourage during site plan review, but I guess either that or you add, you add like a natural open space requirement and a public open space requirement and define them both. But then you're almost making a zoning that's too specific for one certain parcel.
Yeah.
You, you can require outright parkland, and that is different than just open space.
Yeah, so right now we have open space, but we could add in a, that's right. So right, you know, our open space just says a portion of a lot or site unencumbered by building structures, outdoor storage areas and impervious surfaces. I mean, the wetlands easily qualify as o- open space, but if we wanted to add a separate requirement for parkland, then you would be getting into something that's a lot more like this definition here. That talks about, um, spaces, you know, owned and operated, maintained by the town.
I mean, but Laura, if we were to, if we were to designate parkland, would we be forcing the town board to take an action on acquiring the site? I mean?
Yeah, I mean, the town, yes, essentially, yes. I mean, the question is if we're going back to look at the actual zoning and right now we have a 20% open space requirement, do you want to add? I don't know. Another 10% of parkland requirement or parkland fees or something.
We do have park districts that are unto themselves, so the town's overseeing them, but.
I know those are kind of discouraged. They're very funny and they're kind of discouraged to be created these days. I think it creates a lot of problems.
I think there's a particular benefit to the town to keep that southeastern part of the intersection of Balltown Council. Kind of the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody would want to see that change.
Yeah, and that we've heard from the public and that's what I was trying to get at, yeah.
I mean, I think if we could get a multi-use path from the corner of Consol Road in Balltown, I think you could easily fit that in without even taking any trees down anyway. But the majority of anybody, even the planning board, I think, looking at the parcel, doesn't want to see the wetlands and the trees disturbed there.
Yeah.
The question is, how do you make that work? Do you leave it up to the discretion of the planning board during site plan review or do you change it? Because split zoning is hard. We've already had that problem with Jackson demolition. It's hard. But I mean, you certainly, that is a po- a possibility. It's.
I think one thing you could ask the town board if they would be interested in having some parkland there.
Oh, yeah.
And we might have to adjust our thinking depending on the answer.
Well, you know, just one point to note for, for a couple of speakers and people have been commenting on this lot, right? It's currently owned by the state of New York. It's, it's probably held by OGS, Office of General Services. We're looking at probably a multi-year disposition process. It will not happen, I don't, we don't even have a timetable.
There is no timetable.
There's no timetable, so the, 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 the freeze-out period you noted is probably ongoing as we speak, right? Nothing's happening right now because title's held by the state.
Yeah.
The contact is Omar DD Facilities, whatever that agency is.
It's OP, oh, yeah, that's right. It's OPWDD, which is probably held and trapped by.
I don't think they changed the name.
Probably not, well, whether or not.
The reference iPhone did not have the updated name, but whatever, yeah.
It's an extremely long process.
Maintained and operated by the Office of General Services. No disposition processes out there. So title will remain with the state for some duration of time. I mean, we're out, this is hypothetical, this conversation, we're out a little bit ahead of ourselves. So just to manage expectations on the part of, of the community is that it's owned by the state, the state has to, you know, has to sell it, it has to be accepted, it has to go for fair market value. There's a multi-year process attached to this, so I just note that for, you know, for people to consume and digest that. Right, and it's.
One of the problems with fair market value is that you have to figure in the demolition costs. And that's going to be daunting to a lot of residential developers. I don't know that it's impossible for it to be developed R2. But from what I know of the economics, I think it's not likely. It would be wonderful if we heard from some developers whether they thought it was feasible that way. I'm not against the R2 zoning. I don't quite see it the way you do, Kevin.
Yeah.
Um, I just don't think it's going to be economically viable for anybody. And what I really don't want to see is for a big push to hurry up and develop it more commercial, just totally commercial. And I don't care if it's for commercial offices or retail or a mix of the two. I want some residential quality there.
And I think we could get that with the mixed use.
And that's, it's sold.
You know, so, so I, I think we get that there. I mean, I mean, there's, you know, the other option is, you know, go, go the full, full extent we've heard from the public and say, okay, let's call it all land conservation and do nothing. And, uh,
I don't think that's viable.
Well, I'm just saying, just, again, we're just brainstorming, right? Just, you gotta have, you gotta be able to just talk.
The problem, yeah.
So what's the problem, right? So you say, hey, you know, town board says, we all say, hey, that's a great thing to do. We don't want anything there. We want to let it, the deer run wild and look pretty forever, okay? And if everybody wants to just go out there and walk, they can. That sounds nice, right? But then if the state does decide to, to get rid of it, right? Then I'm assuming they'd want to sell it with the developer taking the cost for remediating all that asbestos and the tunnels and all that stuff. So what you could end up then, tell me if I'm wrong here, you could end up in a situation where nothing happens with it, right? It just stays the way it is and, and falls apart and becomes, I won't say a zombie house, but it becomes just this property that we're fighting with the state to do something with. Is that, is that a, that scenario? I mean, I, maybe Mr. Hess or somebody.
You have an attractive nuisance.
You know?
And a lot of problems ensue.
Or, I mean, it's, if, I mean, if, then you, and Leslie's brought this up before, you make a case, case for a use variance. Our zoning board hears from the public, freaks out, says no, but you get sued and it's a really good case for a use variance because there's nothing that could legally be done in the LC zoning.
Yeah.
You get overruled. I mean, you could still do it that way, but if you can make something that protects, you know, that protects the wetlands, protects, you know, open space, makes it very pedestrian friendly, has a mixture of residential, allows for, um, it's a transition between Mohawk Commons and creates walking paths for people, creates a place for transit to stop. Those kind of things could be really helpful and you do that now and then 10 years from now, Mr. Scraper Tennis just brought this up from now, like 10 years from now, the state could still own it and this could just be a great planning exercise, but it's still a good exercise.
Or looking at the current fiscal situation, the state could try to dump it next year.
I don't, yeah, but I don't think they can dump it that fast.
They can't dump it that fast.
They just can't. They have a lot of those fellow.
Well.
Normal sane people would say that. But there's at least one major player who does not necessarily fit that description. We will not go into the name.
So, you know, so those are decisions, like you said, you have, you know, the land, you know, it sounds great, you know, to keep it forever wild, but it, but it doesn't sound like it'd be practicable because how, how you would do that with, you know, with the state owning the property and then go to disrepair or whatever, you know? In fact, the state may not support that, right? To because, you know, they're looking someday to be able to get rid of it, not at, you know, taxpayer expense to let the developer do the remediation and everything in the future, you know? So again, that kind of leads me right back to, you know, modifying the, personally, again, the modifying the neighborhood mixed use to maybe account for, uh, uh, better parkland or open space to try to preserve as much as we can. Because the example for, um, uh, for the one town that, would you say was out of Seattle? You know, that way, I mean, their, their mixed use was all the way from a minimum of two acres for a neighborhood.
Yeah, they had an interesting, um, they had an interesting.
And we're talking about 40 acres, so say you, you take 10, 10 acres away because of the, the pond and some trails and parkland. It's still a pretty good sized site to be developed, right? I mean, at least, you know, when you look at the other, uh, codes that are out there, you know?
And there were several uses we wanted to remove. And I think the question's coming to how do we make these adjustments? Do we want to send as a full board doing it or do we want to have a subcommittee? Do we want to impose on Laura and Jeff to come up with a proposal? I mean, in the past, we have done a subcommittee.
I love subcommittee.
The planner's been part of it and they've come up with proposal and then we react off that instead of.
Yeah.
Hey, God, David.
A good, a good first step is, and I just started doing this a couple of weeks ago when we jumped into it, but is to find some good precedents that are between 40 to 45 acres of a town that's been redeveloped. And there's, I got brought a couple of books that I jumped into. There's, there's some precedents already out there. And one of the things that can be really beneficial to mixed use is whether that's capped off at 20% or not, it's how that space is used and developed. If you have the main thoroughfare is a pedestrian walkway and it's flanked by commercial on both sides, but you can't drive a car down it, almost like J Street. I mean, that's a great open space in an urban fabric. It's very successful. And there's templates that developers can use or in this, I think in this situation, um, a design team could employ as a first step as an exercise. They can show you how that 20%, whether it's walking paths, small pocket parks, public spaces, squares, all tied together with the mixed use. Since we don't have a lot of really good, um, examples to pull from directly, we do have a lot of good surrounding Main Street cities and towns nearby that incorporate a lot of mixed use elements. So I think I'll work with Jeff and Laura on this, but I've got some uh, projects that I'll send to them that we can look at, that you can look from an aerial perspective. They're zoned, they show you the different colors of retail and residential and open space. And, and they work. And they've worked from California all the way to Florida to the East Coast. And like the city here from,
Mukalato.
Yeah, Mukalato, yeah.
Mukalato. It's, the population's 21,500. That's the size of Niskiuna. And if you look at their aerial plan, I mean, the difference is, is we butt up against a river, they butt up against the ocean. So they, they have some similarities to them. And you can start to pull pieces to understand what it is. I think having a couple of good visuals, I know Jeff pulled some stuff earlier. He's going to use it in the presentation. But you, you take a look at 40 acres and it's, it's good, it's a good size.
Yeah.
And to have something that's a completely new insert in that section of town that is close to commercial and hopefully could be better connected to the Schenectady side and work with the state on connectivity along Balltown Road. It's a good area for future development.
But it's also very close to some nice residential. And I'm going to throw one caution to you because I know people who find that close portion of road downtown to be a problem in terms of in bad weather for people with disabilities who aren't in wheelchairs. They don't find it terribly accessible.
Yeah, we know that, you know, obviously Balltown Road too, you know, that's one of the concerns that we have and we've heard from the public. But thanks, David. I, I appreciate any help you can give us there. There are things that we talked about, you know, having, uh, uh, somebody, an engineering firm, you know, do what you're, just what you're saying to help out, uh, but if there's examples out there and, I don't know, again, we talked about budget and whether there was any money available for that. If you have some examples, that would be great to, you know, save the town some money and give us what you got, you know? We appreciate that. If you look also at that code, the sidewalks must be a minimum of 10 feet in width. Uh, whereas I think our bike, hike and bike trails are, I think, are, are they eight feet? That they are in most cases?
No, they're actually, well, the new ones are 10. It, you can go down to eight, um, but the general recommendation is 10.
Yep. And, uh, and, and the reason obviously is they want, they want it to be used, they want people to be out walking, you know, interacting, going down to the store and, uh, in day and night. So even the streetscape and the lighting design was to foster, uh, uh, you know, uh, activity, you know, and at, at night also in those communities, right? Safe, safely, uh, safe activity just by design, the way the roofs were laid out and the proposals and you know, a lot of windows and the, the light shedding being out toward like the, the walking areas away from the homes and everything. So like to your point to, to foster, uh, people walking around and interacting, you know? I mean, it seems like a, a good vision. Part of the problem, I think we've heard from the public, is it's a vision, but it's hard to, it's hard to, to ima-, you know, it's hard to see, hard to imagine without having anything. Uh, that's why the one, uh, uh, ordinance from this, uh, Mukatello, whatever it is. It's nice because it's got a lot of visuals, uh, included in it to give you some ideas of what they're talking about, you know?
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, I think, I know this is maybe more of a Jengas and Mo question, but the reason we brought the ordinances back is because we still felt like maybe there was holes. And I know Kevin, you had some parking.
Parking, parking and, uh, let's see, was it, it was parking was one of the concerns. I think.
Parking, um, I know Mo's concern was that there was not a maximum on the commercial building size, which I didn't actually see. Um, and then there's not a prescribed setback, although neither of these had, I mean,
Yep.
the one actually had a setback requirement that had to be within five, 10, five to 10 feet up the front.
Yeah, they wanted it real tight to the street here.
Because you're creating pedestrian spaces.
They want it right up on the street.
The other one I actually think didn't set it. So I don't think that's as big a deal as we had said, but I mean, we could certainly tighten up the hot street parking, the Mukal.
Yeah, Mukatello or whatever it is, they.
Has a good, like, requirement for shared parking, which we usually support. We could also tighten up the public open space. Um, they both had much stronger landscaping and they both had stronger architectural. If we have our architectural view board, that may not be as a big deal, but maybe we want to put a little more architectural in there too. I don't know.
I really like the idea of breaking up the window styles. Not having all the windows be identical across.
Oh, yeah, there was some good stuff in there.
That has a lot already visually.
Right.
Um, I, I know I'm in the minority on this. I'm still not a big fan of putting parking out back if it's going to be a budding residential area.
Yeah, they actually, some of the things actually showed how that works with the residential.
There was some stuff in here. The other thing too regarding party, parking, Laura, like you said, they, I think it was for like studio apartments, it was like one and a half cars for two bedroom, it was two car. And then for the, uh, any commercial, it would follow the guidelines that were in their ordinance for whatever commercial, similar to what we have. Which I think we've, in the past, we've said that ours might be, uh, pretty intense and that we were looking at maybe, uh, cutting back on that.
But they did, but they did also encourage joint and shared parking and figuring. So I think they left a lot, or at least, uh, maybe the New York one left a lot of it up to, um,
The planning board, pretty much.
Well, yeah, the planning board. And there's also a parking guide, which was similar to the, you know, the trips generation guide.
Yeah, they just referenced the, uh, the industry standards, right?
Yeah, Urban Land Institute Shared Parking Report or Institution of Transportation and Engineered Shared Parking Guidelines. So that's cool. I didn't even know those existed.
It's like a town run by planners.
And I do want.
I want to live there.
Yeah, me too.
I would want some setback from either the curb or the sidewalk that's in the front. Because if the idea is to have a nice streetscape, then you want some greenery out there. You don't want the building right up to the edge.
Yeah, I think that.
There are proposals, there are places that have that, but it doesn't. I don't think it fits suburban character, frankly.
Well, there's a whole hierarchy to developing a street. There's a street strip, there's, there's a sidewalk, you know, there could be the building facade. You know, the width of the street, if there's parking on the street, whether it's directional or perpendicular or parallel. All of that plays, I mean, there's, there's dozens of templates at work.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the main thing is that if you have a space like this, it has to be visually stimulating and it has to have focal points, whether those are squares, specific bigger buildings, a park. There has, there have to be destination points. You have to have people that want to go to a place and walk around. You have to be stimulated to walk around.
But you still have to provide for parking.
Sure.
If the parking's all out back, then you need to make it so the buildings can't be like block long.
Yeah.
So people have to go all the way around.
Well, now they're talking, they're, they're just talking about having alleyways between the buildings with access and that.
But we don't have that in our zone now, so I'm, I was on addressed.
So maybe the next steps would be, um, we could form a task force or committee or something who would work on getting, um, uh, sketched out kind of thing and then work on finding the holes in our code and, and then coming back with, you know, an idea of what we want to see and where our code needs to be improved. And then we could call for another public hearing and then we could forward everything to the town board. That would include code amendments plus the zone change. I think you can do them together.
And we would make a recommendation on what changes we want.
Yeah, because I actually think it's a single local lot, because even when you're doing a zone change, it's actually a zoning code amendment. So you can put other things in there. And that way we make sure that our code is covering what we want to see and that we've sort of fleshed it out at least a little bit to see how it would work. Does that seem like a good idea to people?
It does to me. You know, I think, you know, obviously we recognize that we already have the, uh, neighborhood mixed use in our code. But there's some holes in it and if we were to apply it to the ODHEC.
We want to make sure it's right before we do the rezone.
Make sure it works or we have the flexibility to make it work. Where we're not, you know, we understand to make it work, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot, like you said, a lot of the, the codes tend to say, leave it to the planning board and work it out when we get a submission.
Yeah, I mean, and that's typical. You could do it like that too.
I think we need to have a, a, a better vision, so we can work it out. You know? But I think, and it, it sounds like we're, you know, uh, we have a, like an agreement, maybe not for everybody, but we're still down the path for taking the mixed use and applying it to this 40 acres and, and trying to massage it so that we can make it the best product possible is, is what I'm hearing.
Can I volunteer like Michael and David? I was looking right at you.
I like working with David. I'd like to do that, sure.
Okay, that would be great.
It'd be helpful to walk the site too, I think.
Yeah, we talked about that before.
When, you know, to go through. I haven't, I've only walked around the perimeter, so I've never.
Yeah, I've never been inside either.
I've never been inside either.
I've been inside, but it's been a lot of years.
Well, not inside the buildings, but just inside.
Yeah, no, exactly. I haven't been even, yeah. I would love to do that. Do you have a contact that we could?
I can ask. I know you guys asked me to do that last time. I just didn't have time to put that together, but I can keep working on that.
All right, so let's see if we can plan a site visit, right? At least, you know, walk the external, at least of the buildings up, up close. All right, and we'll keep working on it. Any other thoughts at all?
Laura, I was just thinking about the road that connects to Consol from, all the way from the shopping plaza in Mohawk Commons.
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of this parcel?
Mm-hmm.
No.
It's part of the Mohawk Commons. Actually, it's part of the, I'll have to look. It's not part of this parcel.
No.
It's a long strip that's connected to either Rainmore and Flanagan, uh, property or actually all the way down to like the Target. all the way down to like the Target. But, you know, ODHEC put that tower right up on the corner, which still doesn't have antennas on it. At least, last time I noticed, it didn't. Their property line is literally on that line of trees. So they put that tower almost on their property lines. And then you have that line of trees, and then you have the road. So they definitely do not own that road. Don't, I don't know the status of the tower. We did not get to say on that.
Really? And that was all purely the state on?
Yes, that was all state.
All right. Is there anything else we could talk about now, or comments? All right. Let's continue working. And I know that, Mrs. Scrivettanis, you mentioned that, again, we're being proactive here. If we're not rushing anything, we've been talking about this for quite some time, several years actually now. And I just think we're just trying to drive it, you know.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to make.
No, no, I'm agreeing with you. That's what I'm saying, a hundred percent. You know, it's, we don't want to be in a position, we mentioned this a few meetings ago, where like, like Ms. Gold says, Southern State says they want to go, and right now it's zoned R2, and, you know, our hands are tied, it's going to develop R2, and, and we already have that code in place, and that's what it's going to be. We think we have an opportunity here, and we have time to, to, you know, do diligence to make sure we get it the way we think it's best for the community. So, so thank you for, David, if you got, we'd appreciate it. All right.
Yeah, and we definitely hear protecting the wetlands, for sure.
Yep. Okay. All right, Laura, we'll move on the agenda for now, then. Anything on reports at all?
Um, no, I think we're good for a little while.
All right. Again, if we have anybody that's interested in thirteen eighty or Vinintorpe or three ninety-eight, please maybe contact the planning office so we can, which one?
You want to do three ninety?
Three ninety-eight Anthony Street. Beautiful. And the other thing, Laura, I was going to mention, too, is I know that we had the town and planning board meeting schedules. There's that one town scheduled, it's the colored one, it has all the different dates. Last time we saw it was beginning of the year, it was still a draft. If you could.
Oh, do you want me to email you?
If you could email both of those, so we could put it on our bulletin board, so we don't miss a meeting, you know. That'd be great.
Yeah, I actually do, because I think you guys, the last time you saw it, we had two meetings in December, and the way that they stacked up, we changed it to one meeting.
Yeah, so if you just.
Yeah.
Good to have. I appreciate that. The other thing I want to mention, too, is looking at some of the, you know, the emails we get for the, you know, Planning Federation, so on and so forth, is this whole 5G thing. I don't know if you guys have been looking into that at all, or reading up on that.
Oh, Mr. Khan was, was always reading those.
Yeah, it's something we're going to have to start talking about, the 5G, because that's, you're talking about having some type of, of antenna, or whatever you want to call it, or distribution, and they're talking like each city block will need to have one in order for that to function properly. So a lot of the communities are, are in dire straits trying to figure out how to deal with it, you know.
Like not on cell towers anymore?
No, they're smaller, and they're more like pole mounted. And.
Yeah.
And they have a lot of liberties on where they choose because of the Telecommunications Act and, and because of the federal government. So it's something we, I have an article, if you want, I'll scan it in, I'll send it to you, Laura.
I can send it to everyone.
You know, it's something we got to start looking at, because we could end up, I think they put them up right in front of people's houses. All of a sudden, you come out and you could have this ugly box in front of you. So, so we want to have something in, in place so that at least we can try to, again, mitigate any aesthetics that might come along with the 5G, because I'm sure it's going to be a concern with residents. So.
It's part of why I sent you, Laura, and Jeff, the article I had on the 5G technology and the health concerns, and how the experts are saying no compared to your microwave oven, it's nothing.
Yeah, I got an article, I'll, I'll scan it and send it to you.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Send that one onto the board, too.
Yeah, it just kind of worried me when I saw, when I read it, you know. Get Jengas on board, he's, he's pretty.
I know, he's been reading those, yeah, and he keeps track of them.
Yep.
Um, there's a government technology website that I have followed for years for updates on all of this. They have a, a magazine that they publish, and at some point, they stopped sending out paper copies, so it's strictly online now, as far as I know. If you don't have the link for that, I will send it to you.
Okay.
Anything else on reports, Laura, for tonight?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So just go commission business. Mr. Deapino, you have anything?
Not.
Ms. Gold? Scrivettanis?
By acquaintance, I know the owner of the, the multi-use in Balltown.
Oh.
Would you be interested in having him come to, I don't know if he'd be willing to, but share what he learned and, you know.
Yeah, maybe we could at least chat with him at sort of the committee level.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
You mean a subcommittee, or?
Yeah.
We're talking about.
Could the rest of us be invited to that, then?
Yeah, well, we could do that, too.
Oh, that level? Okay, got you. Yeah, but the, yeah, the, so they even, like, subcommittee on the multi-use. Got it.
I just sort of wrote them as project leads, but yeah, then we can meet me and Jeff and them, and then if, you know, we could bring stuff back to you guys.
Yep. That'd be great.
I think that would be really good, yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah, any lessons to learn, right?
There's, is.
I think it's a very nice spot. What they did there with the canal and the mixed use. But I'm sure the larger area.
Yeah, so like the town of Pittsburgh and Fairport are right near each other, both heavily concentrated on the canal, which is where their main street is. Same concept. They have, some of the redevelopment downtown has been mixed use, so it's fallen into that template.